There are two amendments on the council's agenda for this evening. The first one is a resolution calling on elected officials in the United States Senate and U.S. House of Representatives to oppose fast-track legislation that would keep trade policy making behind closed doors and would otherwise fail to restrict, or sorry, to restructure the misguided and failed trade negotiation and negotiating policies of the past. Second is an ordinance amending section 7-209 of Article 7 of Chapter 7, Wolfsburg City Code of Ordinances entitled "Definitions." The original ordinance passed on second reading in March of this year contained three separate different definitions of regulated rental unit. The first two definitions, which the amendment deletes already correct. They were on page 72 of the ordinance. And the third definition that remains is the correct definition, and that's on page 73 of the ordinance. And the new item.
Question on our ordinance.
That question, the fees, seem like the fees have changed. What are the fees now? For the inspections.
This is just on, yeah.
This is on council's agenda.
The first resolution, Mr. Ryan, a little bit of explanation on that.
Other than what's in the body of resolutions.
I believe it's Mike Merritt for the council.
Mike Merritt for Public Square, yes.
And he'll be here Thursday if there's any questions.
Also on council's agenda are ordinances for second and final reading. File of council number 7 of 2015, ordinance amending certain provisions of Chapter 7 of the Wolfsburg City Code of Ordinances, biannual inspections. Second is file of council number 8 of 2015, ordinance amending section 29-240-3 of Article 8 of Chapter 29 of Wolfsburg City Code of Ordinances entitled "Resonated Zone." And third is file of council number 9 of 2015, ordinance amending Chapter 20 of Wolfsburg City Code of Ordinances entitled "Parts of Recreation Relative to Skateboard."
You want to do that one again?
I have a question on what are the new fees. They're not stipulated anymore.
That'll be on our agenda when I go.
Oh, I thought you were just asking.
There's a resolution. It's going to be on.
There is one new item, which is a resolution. And that's proposed by Councilman Barrett. The resolution would be in support of Senator Casey's proposed bipartisan legislation just announced today, increasing funding to assist municipalities and counties with repairing substandard bridges.
Bridges such as the one we have in Brookside, also Division Street, those that would be having trouble about paying funding for repair. They're a little more than substandard, obviously, they're closed, but they would fall in that category, bridges only directed by counties and municipalities. Just like the law records saying it would are supporting the fiscal federal funding for other municipalities to address those bridges.
I was hoping we'd make it on the record that they're both owned by a deserving county and the city.
Right, but they're still resident city. They're causing not only inconvenience to public safety problems, while emergency vehicle response.
Any questions so far?
Good evening, everyone. We have some resolutions here. First one, authorizing proper city officials to prepare and submit the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and authorize a mayor to enter into the appropriate agreement along with any and all other project documents related to Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application if the application is approved. The second one, authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a contract with the lowest responsible bidder of datum products incorporated in the amount of $135,200. Cost will be paid at a local share account grant program.
Now, that's the bank we just put a million dollars in?
Yep.
And this is an additional $135,000?
It's all from within the same grant budget.
So we're not borrowing extra?
No, we're not borrowing any money for this project. This is, it's actually for the environmental work to get the asbestos out of the problem.
I thought the original grant was for winterizing the bank, not remodeling.
This isn't remodeling.
It's not winterizing either.
Well, it's winterized now.
Right.
They got it, so we have some leftover money in the grant, and we are going to make it as attractive as possible to possible tenant. Next one, authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a professional service contract with Excalibur Insurance Management Service Incorporated Medical Case Management Services with the cost of $1,000 per month for 2015, $1,050 per month for 2016, and $1,100 per month for 2017, and $1,175 per month for 2018.
Why are we doing a four-year deal with that? Why don't we just do it one year?
Let me just pull up a search here. After looking at our records, they have a proposal that goes all the way to 2024, and this is, this will just be for five years. The savings that we've shown, or that we will have, in 2014, we would have saved $21,000 Projected savings are, what we would have saved already would be $7,000 just from January 2015 to the present day. So basically, what Excalibur is doing is they're working with a separate company known as VOC Rehab. It's a third party to them. Now they're going to bring everything in-house to do everything.
Again, my question is, why are we doing the five? Why don't we just do one year, and then follow year, do another year?
We could propose that.
Is there a savings by doing it for?
There is. That's what I got. I'll find out the exact answer for it. My guess is yes, because if you're going to go for five years, they're showing.
But we've had Excalibur forever.
Forever.
So I don't think they're going to.
In all, it is, it's a third party. They're no longer using a third party, they're doing it themselves. So it is substantial savings.
Right, I must say I have to go with Excalibur, just contesting the five-year term.
I know that a lot of these cases, and you know this, that they run much more than a year to get these people back to work, and basically that's what they're doing.
That's what we've been doing at Excalibur here.
And they take that on for one year, would probably not be, you know, be very difficult for them to manage that. Some of these cases that they take on go much more than a year, whether they do get the people back to work or.
Probably either that, but they've been doing it forever like that.
Greg, why don't you look into asking the company, like George said, see if there's a benefit to doing it for multiple years, or if there's a benefit for doing it one year at a time.
That's fine.
We need that information for the.
Okay, yeah, like I said.
We're guessing.
Sure. At the highest rate of $1,250 per month, it comes to $15,000 in the year 2019, with our average cost in the past being around $33,000. So we're still, it shows significant saves, like $18,000.
Well, I might contest.
I'll find out for you guys though. All right, next, approving the financing by the City of Wolfsburg's Finance Authority for a project for the benefit of the University of Scranton.
What is this all about?
It's our finance authority. It's bond pass-through. It's actually, all they're doing is refinancing something that was approved by council three.
Why is Wolfsburg doing that? We've been doing the, George, ever since Finance Authority was formed about six or seven years ago. The whole purpose behind the Wolfsburg Finance Authority is to help nonprofit institutions locally to get funding. Again, there's no obligation to the taxpayers of the City of Wolfsburg. It just allows them an opportunity to use Wolfsburg as a venue for getting big funds, and it is a pass-through. All of the costs are on those shoulders of University's grant.
And for reading this, George, it appears that because Scranton is using the Wolfsburg Finance Authority, the municipality, Wolfsburg, has to do a resolution which simply states that that Scranton project is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area. That's really the city's only role, is under that statute, if I mean this correctly, they need us to pass this resolution saying that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare. And we're involved because they're using the Finance Authority, the Wolfsburg Finance Authority, for the pass-through.
Does Scranton not have a Finance Authority? I mean, the place of Scranton University.
We've had this, this is, this whole deal with Scranton's already been voted on, and it's simply, they're, all they're doing now is refinancing their bond to get a lower rate.
When was all of that?
Jim, are you on the Finance Authority? Do you know the date?
The date?
When it was originally done?
Last year, I believe.
Okay. The city does your proceeds.
So this council voted to okay this?
Yep. We've done similar.
Did we get the paperwork on that? Because I don't remember doing that.
We've done similar financing over the years with King's College, Musacordia.
I remember those, but they're the same.
Blumberg Manor.
Kings.
Yeah, I don't remember passing anything.
Why don't we, why don't we do this for the schools that are in the city? Why are we doing this for school that's granted? Do we have opportunities to do that for the local schools?
Yeah, we have. King's College, and if Wolfsburg University came to us, I'm sure it's something that could be done also.
Who applied for the grant for the University's grant? We did, you say?
No, they did. We're simply just the pass-through.
It's not even, we're not even the pass-through, we're the authority.
The authority is simply the pass-through in your resolution. All the resolution is saying is that it's for the safety and well-being. Correct them?
That's how I'm reading it, yeah. This is the first I've seen this, but yeah, that's what.
So who is on the city finance authority?
Got a number of people. Mayor, Greg Huron, is he right?
No, Antol.
The finance authority.
These aren't even in the paper a year or two ago. Harrisburg's having a big trouble with their Finance Authority. They're being subpoenaed and they're being investigated. I'd like to know who's on our Finance Authority, so we'll get that to you.
Okay. What does this do?
I would assume that.
There's a hearing scheduled on this as part of the process, Jim. Public hearing scheduled June 2nd here in council chambers. June, June 2nd, we're looking at this now.
Well, I don't, I just don't see how we can decide on this now.
Well, you're not deciding on bar lending money. That's, that's the authorities. All you're deciding on is.
Does it benefit the health, safety, welfare of the Scranton residents?
That's, that's all that's seen in a resolution. Finance Authority is responsible for everything else.
So if we don't vote on this, what happens to that finance?
Well, we're basically saying it's not for the health, safety, and welfare of citizens.
Looks like this resolution is a step in the process that has to be gone through.
Okay, but I have another question. Nowhere here is it telling us anything that we can determine whether this is going to benefit the health and welfare. And what we're voting on doesn't give us that. It gives us figures, it gives us, says it is, but it doesn't tell us anything.
Doesn't tell you how it is.
Yeah. I just.
And Greg, I'd like the benefit to help the local city address it. I mean, if we can.
Well, actually, we do it by doing this. Proceeds that do fall back to the Finance Authority. They donated two police cruisers to the Wolfsburg Police Department.
How does it let it come back to the finance?
There is a, what's that?
For each project that's taken on by a Finance Authority like this, there is a fee that is charged. It's a nominee fee, charged, is charged by the Finance Authority. And as Greg said, once a surplus, an appreciable, you know, relatively substantial surplus is realized, then the Finance Authority makes a decision on what they're going to do with those funds. And what's recently, the funding was used to purchase two police cars for the Finance Authority fund.
Can we get a spreadsheet over the last three years of what we've put out and what we've brought in from the Finance Authority before we vote on this?
And what is the nominal fee that we're talking about?
Well, we can have Charlie McCormick, who is the attorney representing University of Scranton here, and the Finance Authority in this project comes on Thursday's meeting.
Could we also have the spreadsheet for the past three years?
I don't know if we'll be able to get that in time.
Can we table that?
Let's see what we can come up with before anything's. It might be something as simple as pulling right off the computer, I don't know. Greg, I think we should have something.
And that information is not satisfactory on Thursday. We could make them on Friday table if you don't send it to me.
We don't make any expenditures, so there should be nothing, no money that we spend on the Finance Authority.
No, I'm just saying, there's both benefits.
Well, we have the same problem. Every time we do this, the taxpayers perceive it as a problem. That seems to be, usually on Thursday, you're going to hear everybody scream, "Oh, they're giving money away again." And no matter how it's explained, it doesn't seem to come across.
And then the bond attorney, Brian Kaskelansky, issues a here and explains it to everyone's satisfaction, and it's always been.
And that's not a opinion too.
It's always been passed by the city council.
Yeah, it's not all city council.
True.
Well, I think we just need more information on it.
Greg, there's further to explain than answering the question. Go from there.
All right, moving on. Approving the, I'm sorry, authorizing the proper city officials to sign any and all necessary documents entered into an agreement with the National Resource Network for the rehabilitation of Public Square.
That is, that is to come up with a plan.
Come up with a sustainable plan.
Analysis possible or match?
Our match, I think it's actually finished the resolution. Twenty-five percent is around $16,000?
Sixteen-five.
$16,500.
What's the rate of taxation? Where does that, where does that encompass?
Go ahead, I don't want Andy to discuss this, this is his big here.
Well, we, we don't actually have the specifics of their work yet. We have to sign the contract to get started with them, so they can build the square, meet the stakeholders, get their opinions, be with any, you know, with the designers of the square, the architects, and then go from there.
If we don't approve their project, we could.
We needed the council resolution to enter the agreement.
Not to do the project?
Correct.
Right.
So sixteen-five, is that just to do a study?
That's, that's to do a study.
Well, it's in, it's in the contract here. We have the timetable from June to October of their engagement work.
And that sixteen-five has to be paid now, is that right? While we enter the contract.
Right. All right. Authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a contract with the most qualified engineering firm, Penn Eastern Engineers LLC, in the amount of $7,660, along with any or all other project documentation related to the minors and mills flood protection project. And finally, settling, or I'm sorry, setting the commercial inspection fees for Chapter 7, section 7-321 of the City of Wolfsburg Code of Ordinances. That is, the original cost on that was $425 per commercial inspection. This, and anything over 5,000 square feet, it would be an extra $10 per additional 100 square feet. So this would actually lower it down to $125 set price for every commercial inspection.
Why are we doing it?
The number that we came up with was a little, we don't think it would be fair to the businesses. We're spending, some of these larger buildings, you're talking thousands of dollars for a yearly inspection. So this was come up based on our research in other municipalities, what they're doing. This is a number that seems to be fair. And I think really, it's one of the reasons why we haven't really gone after commercial inspections, because we haven't been able to come up with a fair number for these inspections.
But we were charging $425?
We weren't doing them.
That we weren't doing, but that was.
That's what, that's what was originally voted.
Weren't doing your commercial inspections?
As soon as this is voted on, we'll start.
And so then we're, and we're also going to increase the time for the validity of their contract for their inspection. It was one year, and this is going to be two, am I on the right, right one, or is that something else?
Not sure.
One of them.
Biannual.
Biannual? What? What's the one? Do we have any other?
Yeah, this is for every other year.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we go from 450 to 125? Why don't we make, go nap to the quarter?
We can, I mean, it's, it's up to council, the number you want to throw out there.
Yeah, but how do you put that number?
Contacting other municipalities and also our third-party inspection agency, who also does other municipalities. They said that, that's a fair number to go after.
Well, how do we come up with the original 450? Wasn't that fair? We need to bring it up?
I don't even know what year that was passed.
But it's true that we haven't been doing commercial inspections to any.
Right, we weren't doing commercial inspections because we didn't have the manpower. Now that we've hired that firm to assist our inspections office, we have the manpower to do the inspections, and I think they took a look at changing the prices since they were going to be now doing these to see what would be a fair price. And I guess it was that research that led to this fee going from, yeah, 450 to 125.
Okay, and the original one was annual inspections, and now it's going to be biannual?
I thought it was always.
No, this thing to say is.
A certificate inspection shall only be valid for one year, is what the original one reads. And then the second one says the certificate inspection shall only be valid for two years. So originally, it was only valid for one year, and it was $425. Now it's $725, and it's going to be valid for two years.
What's a rental inspection property?
A commercial inspection.
A residential inspection, rental.
I believe that's $75.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
So you're talking to.
I mean, it's, it's, it can go one way or the other. You have somebody who has a 10-story building with 20 businesses, and if they pay $125 for every different commercial property, or even like a, say a pantry quick, that's $125. Now, if you had to do that, $400 and dollars, you know, you'd really be.
Are you saying if it's a commercial, if it's a commercial building and it has 10 different businesses, then each one of those have to pay $125?
That is correct.
That's different.
I think you take the arbitrary square footage language out of there, which can be very problematic, just coming from the, you've got a large building with a lot of square foot and absolutely nothing, yet simply because it's large is going to a much larger fee, and I don't think that's fair. I think this is probably the best way to do it.
And the old ordinance seems to be inconsistent. It seems to say that you have to have a biannual inspection, so that would imply it would be two years, yet your certificate was only good for one. So I don't know why one calls for a biannual inspection, and then your certificate's only good for one year. So maybe we're not clarifying that. Maybe that was an error.
Don't we tack it to ten year?
No, I have no clue.
Don't we approve by council?
No, I don't know how the commercial inspection ordinance is.
We'll just need to make sure we clear out this for Thursday, so that we know whether it's biannual, it's annual, how that fits into it.
Right. Make sure you guys are ready for this, sir.
Why don't you have any votes?
No, I just take out that second one for the 135, vote on separately.
The white number.
For the local share account for 135 for the bank building on the square.
Isn't that already in what we voted on before?
It's in a budget.
It's just being used for something different.
So I'm going to vote it all again on the second thing.
But it's best if you move.
Yeah.
Vote on separately. Can I ask a question? Lead paint and asbestos abatement is required for commercial.
In ordinance.
So.
Correct.
To be marked.
Correct.
But we can't mark it until that.
Send you, I mean, I do real estate law.
Lead paint and asbestos abatement.
I think when we first voted on that, everybody said asbestos was cleared out already, from what I remember, and that's why we were winterizing it, because it's already cleaned out.
That should be in the minutes, shouldn't it?
It should.
Well, here's the difference, when the property's not, wasn't winterized, so all the paint, all the lead paint that's on the walls, it was all there. It's not getting here, and it starts peeling off. So that is what they're dealing with. We have people in there with masks on and everything determining how bad the actual asbestos is, and it's pretty significant.
So without that, the whole project has come to stock?
Yeah, and again, this is all, it was all, should have all been in the budget that was voted on, going back to the LSA application, the approval.
So this allows the city to enter into an agreement with datum to address that.
And all the funds are being paid out of the.
Correct.
And the local share account grant program is the.
It's a gaming fund.
Continuing fund?
Yeah.
Now, if we own it, asbestos, lead paint, everything, we own it all, right?
Unfortunately.
All right, and you can have that Thursday for separate vote.
And you have the information for us on University of Scranton?
Correct.
Great, that's a good question. All right. Mrs. Lovell?
Yes, I do. I had an email from John D. Liberto. He lives on East North Hampton Street, and he's complaining about the cars going by night after night with radios blasting and, I guess, all hours of the night. Wants to know, can the police do something about it? From the email, I do not believe that he contacted the police, but maybe we can talk to him. And the police aren't there all the time, so by the time you call somebody, it won't do much good. But maybe they can, you know, just be more aware of the loud music if they're in that area, enforce the law, cite them, I don't know. Maybe talk to the chief of police or something about what can be done.
So you'll pass that on?
Yeah, I'll be here in a second.
All right, I'll reach out.
And that's all I have for tonight.
Mr. George?
Zoning it up on the 271 Blackman Street, houses have been.
Yeah, thank you.
So all of the wiring, plugging has been ripped out, and a lot of garbage in the backyard. We're covering it. Get it all up there today. Oh, good, thanks.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd like to ask council's permission, if we can, for the rest of the summer, to start holding our council meetings in the neighborhoods in all five districts of the city. I'd like to see if we could move it away from City Hall, we could take it into the neighborhood, which would make it easier for the residents to come and voice their issues and problems with council. So I know it's something that council has the authority to do, and asking my fellow council members to agree with this so that we have our next council meeting. I'm not talking about Thursday, because it's too close, but in the future, for the summer months, it's moved to all five districts of the City of Wolfsburg. We have plenty of schools and churches, I think that would be willing to allow us to do that if we all agree on that.
No, there's only four meetings in the summer, so one neighborhood, I guess, would be missed, or one district.
But I think we could start.
We just start in October.
You know, and have whoever's on council next year at this time to possibly continue that practice next year.
No, I'll also just do the work session the same day, so they hear everything, so that in two separate days, and come one day near vote.
Mr. Ryan, would you discuss that with Mr. Mayor, if you're a person?
Sure. Part of the reason why there are separate meetings is for exactly what happened today. If there's something that comes up at a work session through discussion that needs to be followed up on, or research needs to be made, if there is time in between the two meetings to get that information to council, by the time you get to the Thursday session.
What happens during the regular meeting, they don't know what we discussed, and they're asking the same questions we already discussed.
They have an opportunity to come to the work.
I know, that's why I said a lot of people are working out. If we're going in their neighborhoods, give them the opportunity to come to vote instead of one.
Like they're, yeah, we go into the bounds, and Mr. Ryan, you just hear, "No, we..."
This is the first time I've ever been doing this in three years, that way. Really disagree on anything?
Both valid points, but I do think.
Right.
We do, we discuss. Resolve issues and not have to wait another month. Resolve issues and not have to wait another month, since they are so large.
You were moving into the neighborhoods tonight. I mean, uh, if we could go through the resolution process, we can do that, but according to Mr. Henry, it's not necessary to do that, we can just.
Just changing the location.
Right. As long as it's in the ad that goes into the newspaper, you know.
We need to coordinate that with the, uh, your office as well, obviously, to make that happen.
Yeah, the majority of the work's gonna be on the end of Kathy and Jim making sure they have the recording devices and.
And while we're looking at the venue and.
Sure. All right, let's, let's. We'll show up wherever you tell us, and whenever.
Right.
Whenever, whatever.
I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I, I have a little concern about the work session being at the same time. I think that there's, it's obvious that these things come up, that we're not going to have any answers to move forward. But I have no problem with going to the neighborhoods during the summer.
Well, can we make that decision tonight or do we wait till Thursday?
We don't have to vote on it, something has to be voted on, it just has to be an agreement of, I think we're all agreeing with something, we're all.
Okay, with me.
Can we, can we work on it schedule and see what we can come up with, the administration of coordinating this.
Okay, sure.
Start with the, uh, two meetings.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's enough. Uh, the only reminder I have, and I brought up before and I talked to Andy about it, is, and you just brought up a vacant property, make sure when you come across it, you do energies into the system there. And it is in place, it is working, uh, and, uh, it's a valuable tool for keeping track of these vacant properties.
Absolutely.
Not that Andy reminds putting them in, but it's very easy to do, I just put one in myself today, so to get those vacant properties into the, and, and anybody can do that as well, that is aware of vacant property, doesn't, it's not just us, it's any resident or anybody can actually add those into the system and get those taken care of, so addressed. And, uh, obviously, your own practices too, that's, that's a small part. And that's all that I have.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.